The Commission to make good decisions that will benefit all of the citizens of Russell County. And encourage our citizens to enjoy the benefits of living in such a great county. Guide all of us toward faithful service toward each other that promotes peace and mercy. And in all that we do and in all that we say, guide us to glorify you in holy and loving manner. And we ask this in your holy name, amen.
Amen.
I would like to introduce to you the First Annual Junior Deputy Program at the Russell County Sheriff's Office. And leading us this morning in the Pledge of Allegiance is Ms. Abigail Matthews. Abigail is from Calvary Christian School in Columbus, and she is 12 years old. Where is Abigail? Oh, there she is. There she is. And when you're ready, go ahead and lead us in the pledge.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all. You head to the jail.
Y'all gotta go run laps now, don't they?
Sheriff, I know we've got it under discussion, but since they're already in the room, if you want to, you want to talk about the program a little bit?
So, this is, this is a culmination of a lot of hard work. The Lieutenant Jones and Sergeant Gillenwater came and asked me about putting on this program. They're our SRO group at the school system. And so, we opened it up to anybody in the by-city area. They've been at the sheriff's office since Monday. They have been to the range. They've been through the obstacle courses. They've been through the jail, through investigations, through all the divisions this week. And so, today, after they leave here, they'll go through the courthouse and the judicial building and kind of see what's going on with our local government. You know, we're excited that these kids wanted to even come and find out what law enforcement is about. And so, we're really proud of it. It's our first annual program. I think we'll be able to continue it moving forward, and we're just really proud of all these kids that have joined us this week.
Thank y'all so much for being here and leading us in the pledge. So, you don't have to hang around because you're going to have a lot more exciting stuff to do than sitting in this meeting, I promise you. So, thank y'all so much. I've never heard a drill instructor laughing while they're doing it, so that's pretty good.
How many are there, 22?
22. That's your future deputies.
There you go.
We hope so.
Sure need them. I think I started at that age too, so, pretty sure. All right, thank you, Sheriff. All right, moving on. The first thing we have are public comments. We do have two people signed up this morning. The first one is Mr. Leroy Davis, reference to the wiregrass grants. Leroy?
Good morning, Commissioners, everyone. This year, we, we had more grants than we ever had before, more grant requests. And before I name the grant request, I'd like to thank our council, which is Vivian Covetton, the mayor of Hirschburg, Naomi Elliott, who's retired, Paula Thompson, which is Russell County School System, Pam Ward, and myself, Leroy Davis. We, I'll start with the educational grants. And we gave out $40,000 for educational grants. Empowering, creative, and career development through theater, Russell County High School. Rooted to Rise, a sensor space for success, Russell County School District. Regional K-212 Raptor Education Kit, Exploring Birds of Prey Through Hands-on Learning. And that's from the Auburn University Alabama Cooperative Extension, which is right up on the hill there. Helping Families Initiative, Office of the Russell County District Attorney. Visions RC, which is Russell County High School. School Severe Weather Safety Preparedness, Russell County High School. And Tasty Lettuce Creation Salad Bar, Russell County High School. Now, the general grants, Seal Playground Shade, Russell County Highway Department. Russell Readiness Air Safety Initiative, Russell County Emergency Management Agency. And Uche Creek Volunteer Fire Department Communications. And that was our grants. Okay, one more. Business Improvement, Russell County High School. So, we had 25,000 for general grants, but we only did four. So, we moved 5,000 up into education. So, education got 20, and Russ, I mean, education got 40, and general got 20. So, those are our grants.
All right, Leroy, thank you for that update and very good stuff, very good programs going on. I know that, you know, after the plea to get more applicants in, several did. And I know these volunteer fire departments stepped up. I helped Uche Creek with that one, and I know Crawford did, and they were, they come up short. So, if we do have other funding in the future that comes available, please keep an eye out for that for them. I hated to see that it come up short on their app, so. All right, thank you for that report. Next up, we have Coach Dylan Griggs from the Russell County High School Football Program. Coach?
Good morning. Just to give a quick recap on our season and kind of what's going on currently with the program. As you know, last year, we went nine and three and lost in the second round of the playoffs to Spain Park. It was the second-best record in school history. And it's, it was a good indicator of the hard work that the boys have put in over the last four years. You know, last year was our first time that we actually had that group from freshmen till senior year. And to see the growth and to see their commitment to excellence, you know, was just above and beyond. And then, last year, at the end of the season, we signed 11 kids to their preferred walk-on or scholarship to go play at the next level. We even had a kid with a 33 on the ACT that signed, that got a full ride just to go to college. And team GPA was a 3.5 at the end of last year. You know, we're still holding them to a very high standard academically. You know, in fact, if you have a D in our program, you're not allowed to play. You know, we're really attacking the whole character, and they're buying in. And then, as we're going into this season, we've had a very exciting offseason. We beat Hewitt Trustville in seven-on-seven. We beat Auburn in seven-on-seven. We actually won the Jacksonville State seven-on-seven for the first time in school history. And just seeing the boys go out there and compete at a high level and to see the continuation of what was going on last season is just, you know, overwhelming at times. And then, equally, as we're going into this current season right now, we have seven kids with either Division II or Division I offers, anywhere from the University of Miami to Liberty University to Alabama State. I mean, you know, we're kind of all at Kennesaw State. We're just all over the place. But to see schools and colleges actually come in and actually start to take notice in our young men and their hard work and to see the fruits of that labor, you know, I'll tell you to this day, my favorite, my favorite time is to call a kid and tell him he's got his first offer. And so, you know, we're really excited. Today is our last day of summer camp, and August the 4th, we will walk into fall camp at 1:30 to start the new season, to get ready for our first game on August the 22nd against Carol Ozark. But, you know, as always, once a year, you know, and I'll say this, you know, the support that we get from Mr. Davis and Sheriff Taylor and from the Commission, you know, it's just like you can't even put a monetary value because our kids see that logo, they see that sign, they see y'all at the games, they see the commitment. And I think that this continuous commitment by these groups shows the strength of our community and the belief in our student athletes as a whole. And so, you know, we're coming in here, and I know it's late in the year, and whether it's right now or it's when the new fiscal year starts, we're asking for another year of continued sponsorship, and, you know, we'll do our part. But as always, we're grateful for anything and everything you guys have done for us.
Thank you, Coach. I know you've been steady-moving that program forward. I actually went to the game at Spain Park and took the time to drive up there and was proud to see them there. So, I know this Commission is dedicated to helping our school system and continuing to do so. So, it's budget time coming up. We're also going to explore our tourism funds as well, see how we can help with this. So, appreciate you taking the time to come.
Yes, sir. Thank you guys so much. I'm heading to football practice. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate you, Coach. All right, as we get started in the meeting, if you will, please silence your cell phones so that we're not interrupting. I had to do the same myself a minute ago as it started trying to ring. Want to thank everyone that's here today, our IT department for having us on Facebook Live, and those that are covering it through, whether it's the Citizen or Beam. We really appreciate all the coverage that we get and welcome all our elected officials, visitors, people that are here today. And we had Ms. Cindy Brassill today here in place of our attorney, Ms. Hope Hicks. So, appreciate you being here, Cindy, in the drive-down, so thank you. As we, as we start the meeting, we need to establish a quorum if we can. Ms. Riley, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. District 3 Costello.
Here.
District 4 Reed.
Here.
District 1 Lee.
Present.
District 2 Chambers.
Here.
District 5 Darty.
Here.
District 7 Scroos.
Here.
District 6 Corbett.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, we'll move forward on the agenda that, as again, it was approved at the work session on Monday night. First up will be the approval of minutes from the July 9, 2025 Commission meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second to motion.
Motion by Commissioner Chambers, seconded by Commissioner Darty. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Thank you. We have no proclamations, and the only discussion item we have is the Sheriff's Office Junior Deputy, which we covered a little bit earlier with the Sheriff. So, we're going to move right into business this morning. And the first one is the, all the people in the room, and we really appreciate them being here. It's the Phoenix City 12U Little League Alabama State Champions. We have a donation request. Commissioner Costello.
Good morning, and again, thank you guys for being here. This is the Phoenix City All-Stars 12 and Under Little League Champions, state champions. And next week, I think the 28th, you guys are traveling. Is that right, Cory? 29th, you're traveling, going to Warner Robins, and going to compete against every team in the Southeast. Once y'all are victorious there, you'll go on to Williamsport, and where you'll more than likely, you've got a 50/50 chance of winning it all, so. I do the math, so I know all of that stuff, so.
We get to.
Yeah. So, you guys, you guys have had a phenomenal season, and we're glad as a Commission to be able to step up and help you guys a little bit with some travel and stuff. So, at this time, I make a motion that I use $1,775 of my project funds to donate to their travel and offset some of the expenses for competing.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any other Commissioners that have funds that would like to push towards this project?
I'll do 250.
All right. Now, you're going to make me start writing, so. How much was yours, 17?
1775.
And 250, okay. I'll also do 700 out of mine. I'm getting kind of low on my projects, but we'll do 700 out of District 6. Is there any more?
650.
All right, see, I can't keep up with that. Somebody else is writing. I've already lost count, so. All right, if we can get that totaled up here, if that's the, if that's all?
I'll do 500.
All right. Man, y'all, we're going to help a little bit.
They're traveling style this time.
It's going to be good. Y'all might get air conditioner this time, so, yeah, very good. All right, do we have that total? Bell, you're the math person.
I think it's 3875.
All right, 3875, okay. So, that is in the form of a motion and a second. Any other discussion or comments? I will, the only discussion I'll say is, thank y'all so much for taking time to be here. I love your shirts. We are Alabama. That is awesome.
Bad colors, bad colors.
I love the colors too. The colors are great. So, some of y'all Alabama fans, some of you Auburn fans are shaking your head, yes. But again, coaches, thank y'all for being here. I know y'all had a good fundraiser. I actually went to Culver's last night too because of that. So, I know Commissioner Costello did too. So, I think you see the Commission wants to support what you're doing, and, you know, you're our future leaders too for this county. So, thank y'all for representing us and represent us well, and good luck with everything you're doing, so. Thank y'all. All right.
Butterburger was good, but it killed me.
Double. With bacon.
All right, no other discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, congratulations, y'all go win. Thank you. I'm going to give them just a couple of minutes to get out. I know they probably don't want to wait around this meeting, so we're going to give them just a minute or so to get out of the room, and then we'll get started again. The next item on, under businesses, awarding of the EMA membrane roof over. Our maintenance director, Mr. Leon Watson.
Good morning, Commissioners, Chairman. After advertisement, we had five bids on the building inspection, EMA building. The successful bidder recommended that the Commission award it to Superior Roofing out of Phoenix City, Alabama, in an amount of $59,500.
Motion to approve.
Second to motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lee, seconded by Commissioner Darty, and that is a budgeted item. We have it in the maintenance budget.
And it is content below budget.
All right, thank you, sir. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? That is approved. Next is the award, the TK Elevator Modernization. Leon?
This is going to take a little bit. Explanation to the public, this is an emergency modernization of this elevator. We still have a non-working public elevator at the Judicial Center, so they're having to make provisions to take the handicap citizens up to the courtrooms and the service elevator, which is, is, at least, we're getting the handicap folks up there. The rest are having to take the stairwells. After, the current elevator is a Mallory elevator, and they have been working on this thing since February the 18th. So, it's been in and out of service. After talking to Ms. Hicks yesterday, Ms. Chander's going to be sending out a letter Friday demanding that they have 14 days to give us back a working elevator, or we want out of the contract. I've also spoken with TK's technicians. They think that they can temporarily fix this elevator until they can modernize it because of Ponyo's approval the day of this modernization. It takes four months to prep, to change over to their controls. So, which means if we get this approved today and get their funds to them by the 1st of August, that would be around the 1st of November before we can get it changed over to their controls. So, it's, that's kind of an emergency modernization. So, anyway, TK has bid this through Sourcewell Contract Number TK 050224, and the amount, total amount of the bid is going to be $120,896.82. There is a, three payments of this. The first, for $60,448.41, I'd be asking to approve this budget, this year's budget for maintenance, line 304. And then, the remainder two payments will come after October 1 that y'all have to approve in our new budget, so, which will be another 60-something thousand, so. But my recommendation is to go ahead and approve this where we can get this in motion to get new controls put on this elevator.
Motion to approve the recommendation.
Second to motion.
Motion by Commissioner Costello, seconded by Commissioner Darty. Comments? I'll start, I'll say that, Leon, thanks for staying after this. We're getting calls from the Judicial Center, the judges. I know the sheriff's folks are having to deal with this, having to bring, like, the jurors and people up, the inmate elevators are the, you know, things that's just not what it was designed to do. So, I know this is a headache, and I've assured the judge and sheriff and everyone that you're working on that hard to get this done. And the only other mention is that ensuring that we're following all the bid laws and all, this emergency purchase too, so. All right?
The inmate elevator, isn't it the same type elevator?
It's a smaller elevator.
I know the same controls, I mean.
Yes, sir, it is. Our goal is to recommend it actually by the attorney, which I appreciate her doing that, is we'll go ahead and modernize the other two elevators. One next year would probably be the employee elevator, and then we'll do the service elevator the next year. So, to get them updated, this last board that Mallory had to order, they notified us that it's an obsolete board. So, this board is having to be manufactured, especially for this elevator, which they should have told us it was obsolete from the get-go before we bought the other two boards, so.
Well, they should have told us it was going to be obsolete before we put the elevator in. Not that old, not as elevators go.
Well, uh.
About 15 years, is it?
That's not old for an elevator.
It's 15 years old. So, all, both, all three elevators were modernized in the renovation of the Judicial Center.
Right.
And they used old elevator parts to modernize it?
I don't know what they did.
It's the money there for next year.
I always use the, use the example, the elevator in the Colder Building will still work if you put the wiring back in it that somebody stole.
I'm not getting it. I can promise you that.
It will. It was a working elevator a few years ago.
Well, I, I had the most confidence in if Mallory does not get this going in 14 days, that TK will be able to get it back. After talking to their techs, they do not think the board is bad. So, you know, I'm not an elevator tech, so I can't make the call, but I have a feeling that.
The bottom line is, it's not working, so something's not right.
We got to do something, yes.
I think it's Mallory not working.
That's exactly right.
Well, again, appreciate.
Is this possibly an insurance claim? I mean, something had to cause this.
Well, they're, they're pushing it to a lightning strike or a surge in power, which this started it on 2/18. There was no storms in the air at that time, so, you know, there's no, they shouldn't even put lightning on there. They should have put power surge.
Yep.
So, that could have been the only thing that done it. But as I'm saying, guys, I don't think, I'm not an elevator tech, but from what I've seen, I don't think they know what's wrong with it.
Well, that's pretty obvious.
So.
So, either they know and don't want to admit it. That's possible too.
All right, there's no other discussion. Again, Leon, thank you for staying after this hard. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, that is approved. Please push forward. Thank you.
I mean, it's almost something we don't have a choice.
We don't, for sure.
That's why it's an emergency. That's an emergency. We got to have a fix.
That's why we have those emergency funds.
Yeah, well, I definitely don't want to keep telling the prevailing circuit court judge that we're figuring out the problem. I'm ready to tell him we got a solution.
I don't want to go to jail either.
Exactly. I didn't, I wasn't going to say that, but, yeah, I've actually, his dad's almost put me in jail for being late for court one time, so I definitely didn't want to go there, so. No, definitely, so. Moving on, the next one is the tag office transfer request. Ms. Bowles?
Good morning. Yes, I'm asking to transfer from line item 541 equipment to 252 postage. I got a new system, and I was just kind of estimating, because they're doing my mailers now, so I really didn't know how much. This is the first year I've done it.
I like the way they came this year.
Yes.
It was nice, all on one thing.
Yes, and so, if you see something different, instead of getting the little cards, you're now getting like a sheet of paper with four on that. So, I need to transfer $6,000 for postage.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by Commissioner Lee, seconded by Commissioner Reed. Any other discussion or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? That is approved. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
She had to take her glasses off to read?
Well, she's, that's, she's got.
Yeah.
I guess that's the distance side, so. You could, I've got bifocal contacts in, so it doesn't matter, so, yeah.
Upside down.
Yeah, upside down, that's right. All right, thank you. Next one up, we'll, we'll move to the survey and geotechnical analysis request. Mr. Martin?
Good morning, Commissioners, Chair. We're requesting a survey and geotechnical analysis request for the property where the new EMA building is going. This would be, the survey is $4,700. The geotechnical analysis would be $9,950.
All right. Motion to approve.
Second to motion.
Commissioner Costello, seconded by Commissioner Darty. Comments? As y'all know, this is for the new Emergency Management Agency and Emergency Operations Center Building on Prentice Drive that we are proceeding on. We had a very good discussion on it Monday night. These two items have to be done prior to the plans. We had a schedule that was presented to us. Commissioner Lee, we'll make sure you get a copy of that as well, along with the schedule for that, so that you, since you weren't here Monday night. But we'll proceed on with this project based on this vote and hopefully get, get this thing to bid here pretty quick, so. Any other comments or discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? That's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the budget meeting date. Ms. Wright?
Yes, yes, sir. Commissioners, good morning. I would like to recommend that we hold a budget meeting on August the 27th, as I have mentioned to the Commissioners with the exception of Commissioner Lee, that during the August the 11th and 25th work session, we will use those two meetings to deliberate and present the budget from the department heads at that time.
Go over that one more time, though.
On the, the recommended date is August the 27th for the actual budget meeting.
Okay, got you.
All right, on August the 11th and August the 25th were our already scheduled work sessions. We will use that time for department heads and elected officials to present their budgets. Yes, sir.
All right, Commissioners, as we've done in the past, and I know this will be following a Commission meeting, but I'd like to go ahead and entertain a motion to approve. That is the, that date is the budget meeting date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Darty, seconded by Commissioner Reed. Any other discussion or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? That is approved. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wright. Next up, we have the Alabama Department of Public Health Fee Schedule Rate Increase. I'm going to yield this to Mr. Johnny Burrell and others from the Department of Public Health. All right, we got it.
Good morning. James Harden with Department of Public Health. Wes Rogers is our, is our director for the district, and then you guys all know Johnny, who's our local environmental supervisor. Since the last time we came forward with the Commission, as we stated then, that these rates for environmental fees have not been updated since 2002. So, when we initially brought those in front of the Commission, we asked permission from the Commission to go forward with a public comment period, as well as introducing it to other municipalities to get feedback, to bring that back to the Commission for, for your final vote. So, we ran a public notice in the Citizen through, from the end of May through the end of June. We ran a comment period through July the 2nd, met with the Phoenix City City Council on, through the end of June, and opened it up to them for public comment as well. We have received no public comment negative towards the changes, so we wanted to bring that information back to you. I know Johnny attended your work session earlier this week, requesting that we put it back in front of the Commission for a final vote. So, that was, that is why we're here, to bring that fee schedule back to you and for a vote in the Commission for approval.
All right, Commissioners, you have the recommendation of the Health Department. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second to motion.
Motion by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Darty. Any other discussion or comments or questions of our visitors today? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Pass unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank y'all for coming.
And we will bring that, I will bring that to you guys for, for the records for the fees. Thank you so much.
When were they in that? Is it October first?
It's September first, Johnny.
The August first was when the media initiated so that we can get into the renewal for the, all the food permits and other permits that we issued on during the October shutdown.
All right, since we missed the microphone there, August first is when it's supposed to start, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have a food line budget transfer. Sheriff Taylor?
Good morning, Commission and Mr. Chairman. We have a food line I would like to adjust in our jail budget. I would like to move from line item one sixty-three, data processing, fourteen thousand, seven forty-eight fifty-three, into two eighteen, our food line item for the remainder of this year.
All right. You've heard the recommendation. Sheriff, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second to motion.
Motion by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Doherty. Any other discussion or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that's approved, Sheriff. Thank you. Next up, or as we move into the county engineer, I just wanted to mention, I got a text that Hope is watching us today, so Sidney, you're on the clock here. She's watching us, so, thank you.
So, we having to pay two attorneys?
Yeah, I think we're getting her for free today, so, yeah.
Somebody got to be half price.
So, I kind of keep watching my phone to say, you know, is, do I need to get Sidney's attention for her or something at some point? But no, everything's good, so. Under county engineer, we have the temporary construction easement. John?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Yes, I'll be requesting the chair to sign a temporary construction easement with the city of Phoenix City Engineering Office for a piece of property Russell County owns on Fourteenth Street. It's that nine ten Fourteenth Street is where the Russell County Court Referral Services building is. City is doing a street skate project sidewalk through there, and just need a temporary construction easement.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Costello. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That is approved. Thank y'all. Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. Randy, I know you had a couple of comments under sanitation.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioner and Chair. We just want to say thank you to the media for the coverage, for the implemented change. Because of their help getting the information out to the citizens, the call volume has decreased from what we had anticipated, so...
And that was a change about the cans, right?
That was a change on the cans, right, and the second cans. And I just wanted to report to y'all now that it's been a smooth and successful transition as of now.
Very good, very good. Thank you. Thank you for the comments, Randy. And like I said, Monday night, I got a few calls about it, but was able to quickly explain it and seemed to take that explanation, so thank you. All right. Next up, under administrator, we have the financial policy first reading. Ms. Wright?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, I'll be reading to you some highlight points of the financial policy. I have shared the policy with each of you in advance, but this would be the first reading of two readings. The purpose of this document is to serve as an all-encompassing financial management policy for Russell County, Alabama, which will provide directions for the Russell County Commission in budgeting, reserve balance, debt management, accounting, auditing, and financial reporting practices. The county commission prepares an annual budget for each fiscal year. The county commission is required to adopt the annual budget no later than September thirtieth of each year. Debt levels and the related annual debt services expenditures are important long-term obligations that must be managed with available short and long-term resources. The county commission believes that sound financial management requires that sufficient funds be maintained by the county for unanticipated expenditures and revenue shortfalls during the fiscal year, as may be caused by economic downturns in local, state, federal levels, natural disasters, and other foreseen circumstances. Maintaining such funds will help sustain stability of the county's finances and reduces the need for short-term borrowing. The county's commission's objective is for a minimum of six months of operating expenses of the annual budget, less capital for two of the main operational funds, the general fund and the highway, to set aside in reserves for the purposes stated above. The use of the fund, the resource fund balances will require an adoption by the county commission resolution specifying the amount to be allocated from the respective reserves, along with the reason identified in the section above. During the annual budget process, the reserve fund balance will review for adequacy of meeting the objective of this policy. The purpose of the capital improvement fund policy is to establish and maintain dedicated funds to be annually budgeted, funded, or used for new facilities and facility improvement. The purpose of this accounting, auditing, and financial reporting policy is to establish and maintain high standards of accounting practices in the county, thereby enabling the county commission, the county administrator, the assistant county administrator, finance director, to make sound decisions in preparing and adopting the county budget and managing county finances. The financial, the finance director shall maintain and ensure compliance with all continuing disclosure requirements as provided by the county's outstanding debt obligation. This concludes the first reading of the financial policy.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions, Ms. Wright?
I'm just glad to see the policy in writing. I mean, we haphazardly did, you know, done this for years, it just never was in writing, so we had something to rely on. I could always make the statement, well, we used to do it this way, but now we got it in writing.
All right, perfect. So, that's our first reading. I don't believe we need to make a motion at this time. We will do that at the second reading for approval, so thank you, Ms. Wright.
What about my many questions?
Absolutely. Commissioner Costello?
No.
All right, no questions. All right, she got a little worried there for a second, so it was good. All right, Sidney, do we have anything under the attorneys' section?
There's no update. Just thank you for your introduction, and I'm very happy to be all you and so on.
Thank you for being here and tell your father we said hey as well, so thank you.
I hope we'll see you in a few weeks.
Yeah, very soon.
Hope I can make it.
All right. Under Commissioners Discussion, Commissioners, you have anything that was not mentioned today that you need to bring before the table today? I have a couple, as always, right?
Yeah.
First one, I just want to say we're glad to see Gentry back in the chair today.
Yeah.
Missed him not being here. He had a couple of doctor's appointments and other things, and we're glad to see you doing a lot better and right back to your old self, and we're glad.
I don't know about that.
You're close. You haven't missed a beat, from as far as I can tell, and, you know, you know, I'll admit that, you know, as I came up through as EMA director and all, Gentry was kind of my mentor and really put, you know, pushed me to do better, and I really appreciate it and glad he's here, glad he's back, so. Couple other things real quick. I mentioned Monday night, I want to mention again, I know we saw Facebook post on it as well, but we had a GAPS conference last week, which was a disaster of resiliency across the Chattahoochee Valley. Memberships from Russell County, Lee County, and several counties in Georgia, including Muskogee County and the counties that bordered it, along with Fort Benning, very heavy presence with Fort Benning. That was a very successful conference, and really appreciate the work that our emergency management did in that as well. And I know it's gonna continue. I think follow-up meetings are coming, and they're already planning for next year, so very successful. Thank you, David. The other thing is, Commissioners, I mentioned this on Monday night, now we have the letter to go with it, it's on your desk, but pardons and paroles have notified us they will be moving from the building there on Thirteenth Court. Is that?
Place.
Thirteenth Place, thank you. Not Avenue Place, there you go. Thirteenth Place, which is right there by the Judicial Center, they're gonna be moving up to Fifth Avenue area, right across from Taylor Funeral Home, that building, I can't remember if it was there before. There was some type of home health or something there. So, they're gonna be moving there, and I believe that is effective in August, without looking at the letter again, but I just want to make sure you're aware of that and that Leon's aware of that. Obviously, some of our services will end when that happens, maintenance and cleaning and stuff like that. So, if you have any questions, I would like to ask Leon if you can, once they move out, if we can get some signage up to tell him where the new place is, so that we're not getting calls at the commission office and people, or at the sheriff's office, people looking for the place, so we can get that done.
Is that our building they're leaving?
It is. Yeah, it's the old public health, old health department building.
Yeah, I know, that's part of that.
Yeah, so, the only thing that'll be left in that building now will be the driver's license office from the state.
Well, we need to, you know, move them out somewhere.
Absolutely. I'd love to see that building gone, honestly.
Well, that building could be used good, you know, we need storage everywhere we've filled up. It'd be a good storage building, and that's about all it's good for.
I agree with that. The last people that were in the upstairs was a sheriff's office with their pain unit, so, all right. Other than that, I'll move right into the announcements, if anyone, anybody else have anything? All right. First one, I'm gonna let Commissioner Doherty mention this one. Commissioner?
All right. Good morning to everyone. This Saturday coming up, July twenty-sixth, we are having a family van darty educational foundation. We're gonna be awarding six, I mean, seven students, six of those students will be from Russell County High Schools with scholarships. One of those students will be from Central High School. I am inviting everyone to attend this event. It will be located at the Fort Mitchell National Park and Museum at the tavern back there in the back.
All right. Thank you, sir.